I'll bring the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting to order for Wednesday, January fifteenth, 2020. Can we please have a roll call?
Yes, we have nine present, one presiding, and two absent.
Okay, thank you. Please let the record reflect Commissioner Anderson and Callahan are excused. Commissioner McDonough, would you please lead us in the prayer and the pledge?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on tonight's agenda is any public comment on any items that are on tonight's agenda. Mr. Bandarob, please state your name and address for the record.
Our Order Bandarob, twenty-six oh one Grand Avenue, President of the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc., reference communications number two, nineteen four sixty-six, requesting Council Commissioners to change the zoning ordinance, requiring community residential facilities to obtain a conditional use permit within Silver Bow, City County, in all residential zones. A motion was made, seconded and passed in the Judiciary Committee for the County Attorney Joyce to prepare a resolution of intent to amend the zoning ordinance to require a conditional use permit be obtained to maintain a community residential facility in all residential zones. As stated last week, a man from the state was here. He confirmed that what the people are asking for does not conflict with state law. He confirmed that the state permitting procedure does not include any public input process. He confirmed that at least one other local government has established their own local procedure. Various times during the Judiciary Committee deliberation, our city-county attorney pointed out that determining the appropriate location for such a business is the purpose of zoning. Over and over again, I have heard from my fellow citizens that there is a need for some sort of local procedure and control for these kinds of situations, which do not seem to be covered by the state's system of permitting and control. Reference Communication nineteen five seventy-one, requesting Council Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to form a Butte Silver Bow hazardous-to-human-health heavy metals contaminants task force. Last week, the Chief Executive Palmer and in the Montana Standard article of January fourteenth, bringing cancer study out, our Director of the Health Department announced that the Butte Silver Bow Board of Health is proposing to form a committee to review further health studies concerning Butte Silver Bow residents. This is neither the purpose nor the intent of Communication nineteen five seven one. The purpose and intent of Communication nineteen five seven one is the creation, similar to the Greeley Area Focus Group, of a community-wide task force to develop and implement a holistic master plan to address the issue of minimizing human exposure to the heavy metals hazardous metals to human health contaminants from natural ore, from a hundred and forty years of historic mine waste and active mining present in our community. We should be doing everything reasonably possible to minimize human exposure to these contaminants. Enough people are not dying fast enough for a medical emergency. We can grant that. But the precedent and proponderance of evidence is beginning to indicate that we need to start rethinking our priorities. The Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc., will be introducing an addendum to our previous communication for your action. Relative to Communication nineteen five eighty-two, we appreciate a status report as to what you have heard from the state. Thank you.
Which one was that? Thank you, Mr. Bandarob. Is there any other comments on any item on tonight's agenda? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Matt Delong, twelve twenty-three Steel Street. I'm here to speak about nineteen four six six and just to say, you know, as a citizen that is raising kids and invested in Butte, I strongly support this because we need planning, we need to have vision. And I guess we look to you guys to be the leaders here, but as citizens, we're crying out saying, hey, let's make Butte awesome. Let's make it a place that we want to stay. And for us, you know, for me and my family, to do that, we want to be able to see this community be excellent. And so I just wanted to say, you know, I think this is something that is, it's pretty straightforward, you know? We just want to see a process set up that protects everybody and it just makes it a smooth transition and people are aware of what's going on in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jim Downey, eleven oh one Platinum Street. And I'm here for nineteen four four six to say that we would love to have a vote on this to see, to show you that our neighborhood is worth keeping. And this was, this house that was almost bought was already signed and the real estate agent had told the lady that everybody in the neighborhood agreed to this and everything. She was lied to. Nobody knew nothing about it. We found about it and then we were here. And with Eric's help and a couple other people came to some meetings. And I would just like to say, we didn't want this shoved down our throat, and that's what was happening. And so we rose up to try to get this. We wanted to see it to the finish line. We want to vote on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Glad Southergill, twelve hundred West Steel. I'm Mr. Chief Executive. I again rise in support of the communications surrounding residential treatment facilities for many of the same reasons already articulated. But I'd like to add to this that I believe that those undergoing treatment are a particularly vulnerable population. I'm deeply sympathetic to what they're undergoing. And it's for that reason I think the standard for oversight and governance must be higher. It is far too easy, under the current regulations, for less reputable entities to come into our community. So yes, we need a community voice. Yes, we need a process. And yes, we need to protect the vulnerable people undergoing therapy. And so for this reason, in addition to the other ones already articulated, I do hope this communication receives your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Sarah Demone, and I live at twelve seventeen West Platinum. I would like to thank county commissioners for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to show my support for Communication number nineteen four sixty-six. This communication, as you know, is a proposal to implement a requirement for a conditional use permit for businesses, both profitable and nonprofit, that are planning to open a community residential home. These are also called transitional living centers, treatment houses, developmentally disabled homes, youth care facilities, residential treatment facilities, and those who wish to either buy or construct a center in a residential area. The reason behind my support is very simple. Montana State statute reads that a business opening in a community residential home can be located in any zoned area unless the city or town has a provision for a conditional use permit to be sought. Through Commissioner Mankins' proposal, he's requesting that Butte Silver Bow implement a provision for a conditional use permit when a community residential home plans to locate in Butte Silver Bow. The intent is to ensure that the appropriate steps are taken for a home to be safely located within Butte Silver Bow. And the most appropriate way to have community residential homes reviewed for is through a conditional use permitting process. What I'd like to really make clear tonight is that I support all types of community residential homes and programs. I also support making sure the areas where they will reside are both appropriate and safe for both the community residential home and the people in the neighborhoods. The only way to ensure the peace of mind for this is through a conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Francis Bristow. I just moved into twelve sixty West Platinum Street in Butte. Sorry if you can't understand me. My partner and I just moved here because we want to raise a family in this great community with the support of our neighbors. As you can probably tell, I migrated here from Australia a few years ago. I have worked hard to integrate myself as part of this community. I work for a local nonprofit and support this town in whatever way I can. I pay taxes and always try to promote Butte to all my friends abroad. If the city of Butte can learn anything from its past is that town planning is incredibly important. We have warehouses next to schools, houses next to tire shops, and a Walkerville, more alleys and homes. I'm in the early stages of opening a business, and I'm finding out that many things are very well regulated. Why are we not planning ahead to ensure the wellness of both our community and future treatment centers? Adequate planning will ensure that people who need access to the resources that our community has to offer can actually access these and that families have a quiet and safe place to raise children. I have been in attendance at several of these meetings, and I'm always in awe of Butte's progressiveness. We don't wait for the state of Montana. We don't wait for the federal government. We get things done. And Commissioners, you have a chance to support this community now. I'm here strongly supporting the Communication nineteen dash four six six and Commissioner Mankins. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Burke. I live at twelve twenty-two West Platinum. And I think we've talked about this for about three months now. And there's not much more than I can, that I could add that Sarah Demone didn't discuss earlier, but I'd just like to say that I strongly support, continue to support Communication nineteen four sixty-six proposed by Commissioner Mankins, and I would hope we could bring this to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jen Delong, and I live at twelve twenty-three Steel Street. And, you know, my question to you, council people, is just, I guess, what's the other side of it? What, like, why wouldn't we pass it? And it could be, I might not understand the full issue, but what I see, you know, I grew up in Butte and then I have lived away from Butte for sixteen years, and I have been back for the last five years. And I've lived in different communities, different countries, and I just see the success of places are all in planning, everything. You know, a successful person, they're there because of planning and strategy and goals. And so, you know, maybe this is something you guys can discuss with us and tell us, you know, that the flip side of why we wouldn't want to pass it. But, you know, and the way I'm wired is just like, what's the long term? You know, like, any kind of business, my husband and I are building. We're thinking not just today impulsively, but we're thinking long term. You know, what's the best for our family, for our kids, for our community? And so that's, I guess, just my question. Like, I don't, I haven't been to every meeting because I just had a baby in the process of this whole thing happening, but I don't understand why this keeps getting dragged on. And I'm just curious, like, why not, why not pass this? Because then, you know, like, Sean might have a great vision for his program, but if it goes through proper planning, awesome, then it's in the right place. And, you know, and I think this is a great challenge for Sean with his thing that he wanted to pass. Great, Sean, get the support of the community, get people behind, you know, get people, we have a pre-release. Get them behind you, helping with the same, with people with a substance background, you know? So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any others? Please state your name and address for the record.
Carla Cannavon, eleven fifty-six West Porfree. I really was not planning on talking, but nobody has spoken in favor of not passing this ordinance. And I'd just like to say that I think we're, we're a little bit missing the human element here. First of all, Sean and his group and myself, now that I'm on the board for this home, are going through all the proper channels, state, et cetera, et cetera. Nobody's trying to sneak around and pull wool over anybody's eyes. And the people that will be residing in this home are not criminals. I think that's where a lot of the misunderstanding has been. They're not ex-cons, they're not, you know, violent offenders, they're not sexual predators. There will be drug and alcohol testing, there will be monitoring in this home twenty-four hours a day. All of the boxes are going to be checked, you know, as far as legalities and everything and whatever permitting already exists. I just have a sense that this is just one more hoop that's going to make it difficult for others as well, not just our group. I am, I'm opposed to the ordinance. I think that, you know, somebody mentioned warehouses next to houses and all these various things that happen in Butte, Montana. That's part of what makes Butte Butte. And I'd like to think that Butte is a welcoming place and one which is, you know, out for humanitarian efforts. I don't know, I'm rambling, but somebody has to be the devil's advocate here, I guess. And I'm not in support of it. I had absolutely no problem with a sober house being in my neighborhood. I've got neighbors that are very questionable now, and some of which are tech students that party every Friday and Saturday night and make all kinds of racket. I don't think that's going to happen in a sober living house. The sober living houses that are in existence, some of them here in Butte now, have given this project a bad name because they're not really, they're not really sober homes. They're just somebody saying, hey, we're going to buy a house, have people pay rent, and call it sober living. That's not anything like this project. So I'd just like to say that I am not in favor of the ordinance, and I hope you will, and look at the other side of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mike McLeod, thirty thirty Atherton. And I'd be opposed to the ordinance, but I can kind of see where it's going. And I was, Jim, just so you know, I was the Realtor representing the Spirit Center. I didn't have a listing. And just to clear something up, because I don't want there to be a black eye on the Spirit Center, the, when we first made the offer on that property, okay, we let the seller know, we let the listing agent know, and it was our understanding that it was an allowed use within the zoning, okay? I got the call from Eric and we had a lively discussion, and it's gotten to this point. And I will just tell you in front of everybody, I'm not necessarily opposed to this from the standpoint, it'll be full disclosure, and it won't be a lot of misinformation, but I do want to, on the record, support the Spirit Center and let the neighbors know that we thought we were following everything. Their plan was to go to the neighborhood, and I, as the agent, said, get through your inspections, make sure you're going to purchase the home, and then you can have that discussion. Between then and when things happened, it got out of hand, and so be it. But I think the good thing about having a conditional use permit, if there is one, it'll be a public venue. I think there won't be any misinformation that can get spread about sexual offenders or violent offenders, when some people know that wasn't the case, but they told folks that. So I think that'll be a good thing. You get that out in the open. But I would just like to say, I hope Butte is a community which is such a wonderful community. I live on Atherton Lane. I received more emails and phone calls from folks who are upset, and I get it. And they say, you don't live in the neighborhood. Well, I can throw a rock and hit a group home where I live. My granddaughter goes to West Elementary, okay? So I care about all the communities, but I think, I think at the end of the day, I just hope Butte, as these, as these applications come, whether it's an aware group home or Spirit Center, that we look at them and realize that these folks, they deserve, you know, everything we have. And so if they follow the process, whatever process you folks all decide, so be it. But I hope as a community that we're accepting of the folks with disabilities and the ones that are in recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tony Harper. I live at thirteen oh eight West Porfree, and I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I'm just here in support of Commissioner Mankins' proposal.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Lisa Howell. I live at thirteen oh eight West Aluminum. I just want to clarify, I'm not against the Butte Spirit Center, but it did open my eyes to the possibility of things like this happening in our neighborhood without us knowing about it. That's really all it comes down to. We want more oversight. We want more planning. The statement was made, Butte is Butte. I want Butte to change. I do. I'm not from here. I'm excited about growth here. When my parents moved here when I was seventeen, we looked at house after house, my mom and I joked about, is there no zoning here? Then my husband and I moved here ten years later, and we were like the same thing. I mean, it, there's a, like they said before, a warehouse. You know, that's Butte is Butte. But I think what we're asking for is just all of us, more zoning, more planning, more oversight. It's a vulnerable population, absolutely. Would I want this community two blocks from where my son's going to school? I think that everybody decided maybe next to a school isn't great. Would I want a different type of home there? Absolutely. I just think that it's getting confused. I'm not against the Butte Spirit Center. I've read Sean's letters. I see his vision. I'm excited about that type of a home being here. But I don't think that they're all going to be like that. I don't think they'll all have that same vision in mind, and I think that we could have control over that more if we put something like this into place. So just for the record, I'm not against Butte Spirit Center either, but I would like more planning ahead of time, more discussion ahead of time, and I would like a vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Harper, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank God, I'm skinny from the waist down. I'm Wayne Harper, twelve fifty West Woolman, up on the west side. I'd just like to reiterate, I think this commission is in a position to do a win-win. I do not see the downside of the Spirit House. And anybody who wants to look, I signed for a home in our neighborhood when everyone else came to me to say, let's fight this. And I said, these, I'm not a NIMBY guy. Not in my backyard isn't right. If it's right for Butte, it's right for anywhere. With that said, it's a win-win. A conditional use permit is required in Bozeman? Hell, and the only place that has an ordinance is Kalispel. But if you look at two thousand and eight in Bozeman, they had this situation, and they had a conditional use permit. When they went through it, you can say to the community, to the people, and as the commission well knows now, it's citywide, it's not just the west side. You can say to them, we looked at this, we okayed this, here's why we went there. Can you deny them? Sure, if something's wrong. Can you cite them? Yes, if something's right. It's a win-win for everyone to have a conditional use permit and to pass nineteen four sixty-six, because what it will do is tell the neighborhood, we looked at this, and this is why it's right, versus, right or wrong, this house came in under radar to everyone in the neighborhood and scared the hell out of them, pardon my French. If there's a conditional use permit that you have to use, the neighborhood gets to be involved, the person wanting the place there gets to be involved, and everyone can say, we thought this through, here's why we're here, versus not having a permit and allowing, and I'm going to tell you right now, anyone who relies on taxes or the state is wrong, saying, oh, the state said this, okay, there's under ten people there. Uh-uh. Let's do it so that we can say to our districts, to everyone in Butte, here's the reason it is there or isn't there. I think it's a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to the report of the Chair, which I do not have anything to report tonight, so I'll move right into Section One, Communications. Communication nineteen dash four four three, Eldon Beal, Citizen requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to amend and include Emma Park, BSB County Code of Ordinances, Chapter nine point one six, park restrictions, and to include penalties and/or fines, et cetera. Commissioner Shaw, I believe you have an update on this communication.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I did contact the Parks and Recs Department, and that was the next step to take this to. They were going to have a, make a recommendation to this body, but they have to have a board, a board meeting, which is on the twenty-seventh of January. It was bumped up a week, so. It was bumped up a week, so when that happens, we should be getting some kind of response from them and we can continue on with this. But at this time, I'd like to hold this in advance.
Okay, we'll continue to hold this in advance pending that report back. Number 2, Communication 19-466, Eric Mankins, Commissioner District #9, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the chief executive to discuss a change in the zoning ordinance requiring community residential facilities as defined by state law to obtain a conditional use permit within Butte Silver Bow County in all residential zones, including R1, R2, R3, R4S and R-C. As you guys know, I segregated this communication last week for the simple fact that there was some miscommunication out there that I was hearing, and I wanted to give it a proper venue to make sure that we had plenty of discussion, we've had public input on it. But not all the commissioners have been privy to every communication or every discussion that's been handled at the Judiciary Committee, so I wanted to bring it forward in that regards. One of the communications or one of the conversations that I kept getting from people was that, why would we not pass this resolution? Because this would make it so that there would be no, none of these houses would be established in Butte because of that resolution. That is not the intent of this resolution, and I wanna make sure that the public is aware of that, because that has been a misconception, misconception out there that the public has actually addressed me on that they thought was going to happen. The other thing that they were saying is that, well, if this was in place on the last issue that we had on the west side, they would've got denied and it would've never met the zoning board. That's also not true, because there might not have been anything that would've denied 'em. So this isn't a slam dunk that all these halfway houses are gonna get denied. And I don't wanna go through, and I didn't feel comfortable with voting on something that I didn't feel was properly voiced to the public, and I wanted to make sure that it had that opportunity. And so with that, I did talk to Lori Casey and kinda asked her what it means when we pass a resolution, what exactly is it going to do, and how do we enforce it, and who is it going to affect? And she told me, and I think it's all pertinent information, that the public needs to hear. And so Lori, I hope, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you could just give us a lowdown of what this resolution would do in the process of it, because another concern is, is it's not every halfway house would have to go through this conditional permit. There's others that could just continue to work in residential areas just as they are today, and there's not an official way to do it. I mean, it's my understanding this resolution would make it so that there's a public notice given, but it's no guarantee that it's gonna get denied and we're not gonna have any of that in Butte. So Ms. Casey, if you'd be okay, I'd just have you kinda give us a lowdown on that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, for the record, I'm Lori Casey, Planning Director. Thank you, and I appreciate the comments that we have heard tonight. There's a few things before we go through that resolution of intent that I would like to clarify. You've heard a lot of the term of business, and these very well may be businesses, but under state law, it says that they will be analyzed as a residential and considered a residential use. The conditional use process will not change that. To the extent that we adopt a conditional use process, the criteria will be analyzed with it based as a residential use, because we have to follow straight law that if they meet the definition of a community residential facility, they are to be considered a residential use, and that's how they will be analyzed under the criteria. A conditional use permit is to view and make sure it will fit in harmony in the neighborhood, and there's a 20-set question criteria. I had given you, I believe all of you got my staff report when this initially came out with that criteria. So I just wanna make sure, because we hear the term business, and any business would have to go through a process, yes, in a residential zone. So I just wanna be clear that we have to analyze it as a residential use, that won't change. There's a number and a wide definition of a community residential facility. There are group homes for the developmentally disabled, and I think it's important that we know how many we have licensed here. So for a developmentally or severely disabled persons, we currently have 11 licensed community homes for persons with developmental disabilities. We have three homes for adults with mental illness. Youth foster homes, a kinship foster home, a youth shelter care facility, transitional living program, or youth group home, as defined in Montana Code 522602. We have three youth group homes licensed with the state of Montana here. The foster homes are done out of another division of the state, so we have approximately 100 foster homes, and we have 278 kids in foster care, of which 200 are between the ages of zero and five. The primary concern here tonight that we've heard on a community residential facility is concerning a halfway house operated by the, under the regulations of the Department of Public Health and Human Services, and we have zero that are licensed. So we've heard a lot about halfway homes or sober living houses that we have. In particular, some have been in Commissioner Sorridge's neighborhood that we checked on that is not licensed. So they won't fall under a conditional use process, because the conditional use permit process is only if they're gonna be licensed as a community residential facility. So I just wanna be clear on that, that those homes are probably operating under a landlord tenant. They're renting out the house. So that will not affect those homes that are some of the trouble in the neighborhoods. As far as a licensed adult foster family care home, we have five licensed and one pending application. We do have assisted living facilities, however, all of them are licensed for over eight residences, so they're not considered a community residential facility. So that's how many we have, I just wanted to put that out there. That was presented to the Judiciary Committee, but I think it's important that everybody here has that, because the conditional use permit, all of these facilities would have to go through that process. So I think it's important to know how many facilities. So to the extent you adopt a conditional use permit, if these facilities wanna expand, enlarge their home, they'd have to go through that process. So I thought it was important that you know how many we have. There was some testimony that said that the city of Bozeman requires a conditional use permit. With all due respect, I can give you the section of the municipal code of the city of Bozeman, which allows them as a permitted use, if it's a community residential facility or eight and under. Helena, Great Falls, Billings, all are the same in the residential zones, they all treat them the same. Now, if it's nine or more is when they require a conditional use permit or a special use permit. And I do have all those codes, they're municipal codes, if you need them. Now, as far as the resolution of intent, what the resolution of intent in the vote tonight would do would start the process. It would start how we would go about changing and adding the conditional use. So what it starts is our process, so upon a resolution of intent, staff would do a staff report for the planning board, which serves as the zoning commission. We would analyze and go through, there is criteria. In state law, you need to meet the criteria to change the zone. So we would go through and do a findings of fact on that criteria for the zone change. The planning board, serving as the zoning commission, would schedule a public hearing on that. They would listen to the findings of fact of the report, they'd listen to the public testimony, and they would make a recommendation to this body. Upon their recommendation, whether it was for to do a conditional use permit or not do a conditional use permit, that recommendation would then come forward to this body. This body is required to hold another public hearing prior to taking action. And then you would also receive the staff report, the findings of fact, the planning board, serving as the zoning commission's recommendation, and after the public hearing, you would make a decision of whether we have met the criteria outlined in state law to do a zoning change. It's kind of a complicated process, I would answer any questions that you may have.
Sure. Thank you, Lori. And that was a lot of information, and I don't know if all the commissioners heard all that before, and if they did, I apologize. But the one question that I have, Lori, you mentioned in Commissioner Sorridge's district, there was a house that you guys were looking at at that point. And at that point, it was the same thing, the neighborhood got together. I know they called Commissioner Sorridge, they called myself, 'cause they didn't know whose district it was, and at that point, we didn't really know how to handle it and what to do. But in that instance, this resolution would not affect that house at all. They're completely legal the way that they are right now, and there's nothing that we as a city would do on that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, from our investigation, at least by the Violent and Sexual Registry, there's five people living in that house. We don't have any information that they should be licensed through the state. If you recall, Mr. Anderson said that you could file and ask them to look into it, but if it's simply a landlord tenant, then they're operating legally, because our definition of a family is five unrelated adults living together. And so at least by the registry, there are no more than five unrelated adults living there.
Okay. And like you stated, this doesn't just affect these houses, this would affect the conditional use permit for foster homes, development, mental homes, all that, right? I just wanna make sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, that is correct. Anything that falls under the definition of a community residential facility, with the exception of a daycare, not a daycare center, a daycare that serves 12 or under, would go through a conditional use process.
Okay. That's all I have. Does anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Lori, I understand we're just looking for a resolution of intent here, but should this resolution go through all the process which you explained, and I know its lengthy, I've been in government for a while since I worked, and I've attended some zoning meetings on conditional use, would this mean that the people that are already in, the adult-youth foster cares, the 278 kids, the 200 aged zero and five in foster care, would these people have to come, or would they be grandfathered in, or would they have to relicense as we pass this resolution here in six months or whenever this took place?
Ms. Casey?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fisher, generally, any change to the zoning ordinance has a grandfathering clause. We currently would have to find a list of, as the date of codified, of who is a foster home, and then anyone else would have to go forward. Generally, and the same with your aware, your BSBs, however, if they wanted to expand, make an addition to the home, that would trigger that they'd have to go through the process.
Okay. Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Lori, I appreciate your input. I know we spoke about this in depth through the time, and I think the key is a resolution of intent. I think when you go back to your valid information, and you go to like what Sarah Demony spoke about, Mike McLeod spoke about, and Wayne Harper, I don't think any of us are really opposed to these homes. I just think, you know, you remember at first I was kinda iffy on this, but I've kinda made up my mind that a resolution of intent for a conditional use permit in this situation, I think is a valid place, because if you've ever been to a zoning meeting, and you go to them quite a bit, I know that, I see you there, 'cause you're at every one, I think this is a valid proposal, and I think that Wayne Harper made a good point. It could be and will be a win-win for Butte Silver Bow. Thank you for your input.
Commissioner Mankins, did you have a, you had a comment?
I would just wanted to, just to clarify on, well, not so much clarify, but I just wanted to ask Lori, how long would it take for somebody to obtain a conditional use permit right now, if it was in?
Ms. Casey?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mankins, typically, about a month, a month and a half, the applications are due on the first Wednesday of the month, and the board generally meets on the third Thursday of the month. So the process itself is not generally lengthy.
Follow-up, Commissioner Mankins?
So a follow-up with that, and what we learned in the judiciary from the people that were there, that when you talk about foster kids, and when the people came, and I can't remember the lady's name, but she said it took a year and a half before you're gonna find a foster. So this is not going to affect someone becoming a foster parent or taking in a foster child. I just want everybody to be understood that. I mean, it's kind of a big deal. People feel that we're not very empathetic to those certain people's needs and whatnot, but we are. And when we asked that back in October, I know this process has went on since the second week of September, and now we're here looking for, like Mr. Fisher said, with this resolution of intent. And I'm glad, Lori, thank you for coming in, and I think that coching us up a little bit more, and Chairman Morgan for asking to have her tell us a little bit more about the community residential facilities and how the process works. I think that if there's no more discussion on this, I think I would like to make a motion to, I mean, is there any more discussion? I didn't know if anybody was still wanting to say something more.
Commissioner Mankins, you feel free to make a motion.
All right. So I would like to make a motion that Attorney Joyce to prepare a resolution of intent to amend the zoning ordinance to require a condition use permit to be obtained to maintain the community residential facility in all residential zones.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything else on the question? Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna be supporting this, but I'd like to clarify why. Three months ago, when this started in September, I attended the neighborhood meeting, there was a lot of misinformation in the room. It was discussed that it was before council, and we kinda let it slide, and there were other misconceptions about the house, and the proprietor, and the board, and, you know, nobody had a, nobody was on the same page. I don't think it was in ill will that people wanted to shut their neighborhood down, but I've always been an advocate, and I think that more information is always better. Once people are made aware of things, they're gonna make their own rational decision. But it's probably the most generous city you'll find in the world. I mean, we always rise to the cause for a medical benefit, or a clothing drive, or the food bank, but in terms of just public information, I think that it's always best that we let the public know as much as we can, and what we're actually making the decision on, before we do it. And I think that's why, you know, that's the main reason that I'm supporting it tonight, is that public notification and awareness is better. It's not, it doesn't make a situation worse, it makes it more effective, in my opinion. So I will be supporting that, but, you know, I did attend the meeting three months ago, and I did chair the Judiciary Committee meeting, where we've sat for three months, and it wasn't that we were trying to keep information from anyone, it's just that we had such vigorous discussion at times that we couldn't get it out of the committee on a motion in a second. So I too commend Commissioner Morgan for segregating it and getting it out in the open, so, thanks.
Any other comments? Commissioner Sorridge?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. You know, I just wanna say also, I'm probably gonna be some-
You know, I just want to say also, I'm probably going to be supporting it just for the fact that I do believe this is going to be, to keep the good operators honest, you know, the good operators, they want to do things right. And I, so I think I am going to support that, and it's going to also bring some transparency. You know, the neighbors seem to want more information. Well, it's probably going to add some work to our staff. You know, it's probably going to add, you know, some of these meetings are probably going to be highly attended, I would imagine. But I believe it's going to add more transparency to this whole, this whole situation, so I am going to be supporting it.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, there is a motion on the floor, as Commissioner Mankin stated. Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
We have ten ye and zero nee.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Uh, moving on to communication number three, communication nineteen dash five seven one, Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation Incorporated, requesting council commissioners authorize the chief executive to form a Butte Silver Bowl hazardous to human health heavy metals contaminant task force. Commissioner Shaw, I believe you also have an update on this as well.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm on the Board of Health, so I was involved from the start, as a participant in getting this off the ground. And I know the chief executive and the, uh, Health Director, Karen Sullivan, and others are forming what they're going to call the Butte Silver Bowl Health Study Advisory Committee, be a subcommittee of the Board of Health. It's still in the, in the works. It'll actually, I believe there's a communication coming before us next week to vet and to hopefully approve that committee. So I would recommend that we hold this in advance, but I will ask Chief Executive Palmer if he has anything to add to that, since he's kind of been on the, on the boots on the street.
Chief Executive Palmer, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. There will be a communication coming next week to appoint a committee, a health advisory committee that will look at all of the health studies that are out there, whether they're pertaining to the Butte priority soils, or any other superfund site, but also the community at whole, whether it's in the Greeley neighborhood, or anywhere adjacent to the active mining area. They will be looking at the metals and the dust control and everything else. So I think it's exactly what the Greeley neighborhood is asking for. And they might not agree with that, but I, I think that that committee is the one that's going to be able to tackle all the problems. So that will be coming next week, so I'd ask that you hold this in advance.
Okay. We'll continue to hold this in advance for another week. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I guess I got, I know there's a communication coming next week, but, uh, Chief Executive, are we looking at another advisory board? Or are we looking like a 12-member board, a three or four-member board? I mean, you know how I am on these kind of things, that I'm not opposed to this, but I have questions about another board. I mean, we've got the Health Department, we've got the Health Board, I mean, we've got all kinds of advisory boards, and you know better than anybody, because you've got to appoint them, you've been here a long time. Are we, are we creating another level, or do you feel, you're more involved, do you feel that this is something that will really kind of add some fuel to our, to our answers? Or, I, I'm just a little confused about, it says, appoint a task force, you know, I'm just not sure how, how we're going to go about that. Thank you.
Sheriff Lester, can you close that door, if you get a chance? Chief Executive Palmer?
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. This will be a subcommittee of the Health Board, and it, the intent, the primary intent is, you know, you've been seeing a couple of health studies that have been produced between people in South Carolina and here in Montana, and there's a lot of questions as to the validity. And we are in no means technical experts to answer the right questions. And this committee will be made up of the people that will be able to have the research capability to answer the questions that these health studies are bringing up. You know, the, the latest one on the brain cancer being a higher risk here in Butte and Anaconda, I think that that's false, and I think that we're on par with the rest of the country. But I want the experts to be able to look at this and give us the answers. If we keep getting these studies out of South Carolina that paint us as a dire health risk, we're not going to have anybody, any businesses or residences locating in Butte, and we have to come up to the, with the answers. And this committee will look at, you know, they're tied in with the Health Department, they'll be able to do the studies. And if there really truly is a risk, then we have to come up with the answers. How do we answer those questions that they bring up? So I think it's going to be different than a normal ad hoc committee that can look at it. I think that it's the proper way to go about getting the answers we need as a community.
Follow up, Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. And that was kind, I think we're on the same page. I mean, you know, we get these studies, and then somebody counteracts with a different one, and then somebody says, you know, they didn't study it right, it was parts per billion instead of parts per million, and, you know, we get in all these. So I respect your, your work in this area, and I wish you the best, and we're here to assist if we can. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll continue to hold that in advance, communication nineteen dash five seven one. Number four, communication nineteen dash five seven two, Mike Cerise, President of the Lady of the Rockies, requesting council commissioners consideration in acquiring a portion of the county-owned parking lot between St. Mary's Church and the Federal Building. The Lady of the Rockies owns one part of the diocese area, one part, and the diocese owns the other portion which we have just purchased. We, as in Mike Cerise, President of the Lady of the Rockies. We'll continue to hold this in advance, as we are waiting for a report from Land Sales Committee. Number five, communication nineteen five seven eight, Gary Rundle, citizen, requesting council commissioners to consider allowing the purchasing of the property located at eighteen twenty banks. I wish to redeem the property from Butte Silver Bowl before the tax sale in February. Mr. Rundle, now would be your opportunity to just come up and, and speak on your behalf, and, and kind of give us a background of, of what's going on. So, Mr. Rundle, the floor is yours. Oh, on the bottom of that, yep, there you go. You're good.
Thank you. Chief Executive and Council Commissioners, as you know, my name is Gary Rundle, and I'm requesting to buy back the property from Butte Silver Bowl before it goes to the next tax sale. Um, in the past, I did receive the certified letter at my residence stating it was going to tax sale, but I failed to read it. I was buying property on contract for deed agreement with Summit Valley Title. I got into a bad battle with alcohol and failed to make the payments in which the taxes were included. Right now, I have a letter from my credit union stating to pay taxes to Butte Silver Bowl and pay off the title company that was in default. I have never had any complaints with the community enrichment in all the years that I have lived there. The property has two houses on it, and one of them has just four exterior walls. I wanted to tear it down, but the owner said I could not until the contract was met. My plan is to tear the house down this summer if granted to purchase the property back. Again, I take full responsibility for my delinquency on the taxes. I should have been paying them, and I failed to do that. I said I had issues with alcohol, I was sentenced on a fourth offense DUI. I entered the Family Drug Court, and I'm trying to clean up the problems that I created when I was not sober. I live at the home with my wife, and my three daughters and son were raised there. I would like to save my house for me and my family. I have been sober for three years. I'm working at REC Silicon and doing everything I can to do better than I have done in the past. I would like to thank all of you for your time, and sorry for the inconvenience. I also have that letter for you guys to read from my financial institution.
Thank you, Mr. Rundle. At this time, I would just call on Lori Baker-Patrick, just to come up and kind of give us a, a breakdown of where we were at in a staff report, like you did last week. So, Ms., Ms. Lori.
I also have Joe Connors.
Mr. Rundle, yeah, go ahead.
I also have Attorney Joe Connors here to speak on my behalf.
Okay. Mr. Connors, do you have anything to add right now, or?
I do have a quick one.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Lori Baker-Patrick, County Treasurer. Just to give you a little breakdown, I did prepare some forms for you that I placed on your desk earlier today. And to kind of go over it, it's just, nothing against Mr. Rundle and his situation at all. I think he did a great job speaking. But just the county's process, and what we do in our office, I think this kind of gives an idea. The first couple pages that you have are the 2015 tax lien information, when the taxes went delinquent. So tax delinquency, tax liens, and tax deed process go hand in hand in the treasurer's office. So first of all, we have to place a lien on the property, a tax lien certificate, before we can do, enter into the process of tax deed, once that becomes three years delinquent. The next item is a courtesy notice that I published in the newspaper, myself and our assessor, Dan Fisher. When the legislation in 2017 had changed the way property owners paid their taxes, it was very hard on the property owners that were, used to be enabled to come into our office and pay delinquent taxes just for the very last year, and get out of trouble for being on tax deed. When this happened, the state law changed it to where if there are current taxes due, the current taxes have to be paid before the delinquent taxes can be paid. That changes throughout the year. Right now, it's just the first half, but after April, it becomes the whole year of the current year taxes. So you can see where that comes, becomes cumbersome on our property owners when they've fallen into a delinquent situation. So that was just a courtesy letter, letting people know that if they are coming in, to be prepared for that. The second notice is our notice of property tax lien sale. This process ended with the legislation in 2017, but it was such a huge bill, and a lot of training was required by all of our treasurers in, in Montana. And so we can be more stringent with the law and not less stringent. So we did hold our normal tax sale, per se. It was a two-day sale, nobody ever showed up for it, and it was just for the basic tax lien, the, the delinquent taxes that were delinquent for that year, that we were placing liens on. We also did the new form, which was a publication of pending tax lien attachment for the 2016 taxes. And that publication is publicated, or published twice in Montana standard consecutively. After that, you don't have the notice of pending tax attachment that we sent out, because we weren't attaching those to the records at that time. We've become more advanced now, but those were sent out. They have to be sent out two weeks prior to us issuing a tax lien certificate on a property. The next is the tax lien certificate for the 2016 taxes. And then it's, it's more of the same. So the next year, when the 2017 taxes became delinquent, we have to publish our notice of pending tax lien attachment two weeks before we probably issue into the tax lien certificates. On this example, Mr. Rundle did come in on July 2006, or July 16, 2018, and paid all of his 2017 taxes. I would assume he came in to come and pay delinquent taxes, but at that time, the law was changed. And so the current taxes at that time were the 2017 taxes. And so that's what he did come in, he did end up paying in our office. The next is for our 2018 taxes, after the second half became delinquent. We've just been trying to make our property owners more aware of what's coming up and, and what's happening, so they're aware of our delinquent tax situation. This was a courtesy notice that we published in the newspaper on the, after the second half, that the taxes were delinquent. And then again, our notice of pending tax lien attachment for the 2018 taxes. Our software company added a new payment reminder in our system last year that we were able to use for the 2018 taxes. This notice went out before the notice of that a pending, or a tax lien may be attached. So with this one, and then a week or two later, then the notice of pending attacks, pending attachment of a tax lien went out, before we could issue the tax lien certificate on August 1st. I did get some calls, because people thought I was harassing them, because we sent more notices, but I don't know, I don't know what we're supposed to do. But we're just trying to get the information out there. When we started our tax deed process, my first obligation before we start that is to send out a notice in January, the first part of January, notifying property owners that a tax deed situation is happening on their parcel, and they need to contact our office. And then the notices that Gary had mentioned earlier follow that. And that was part of our tax deed process. So the dates for that are January 10th, I mailed out our notice, and then May 31st, our certified letters have to go out. And then the publication went in on June 2nd, followed by June 9th for the publication before our sale ever happened.
Thank you very much. Mr. Connors, you had something to say? Then I'll ask the commissioners if they have any follow-up questions with you. I apologize.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and Council Members. My name's Joe Connors, Jr. I'm an attorney with the Butte Family Drug Court. What my job is on the drug court, and that of my counterpart, Tim Dick, is that we represent the participant parents and deal with their legal matters, should they happen while they're in the drug court, or if they have neglected things prior to coming to the drug court, being in the throes of their addiction. Gary, I've been assigned to Gary Rundle. And Gary had, had come to us on a fourth offense DUI. He's made his mistakes, and he's working hard to rectify those mistakes in our drug court. It's a difficult program. He's subject to at least three random UAs a week. He has to attend at least two AA or NA meetings a week. He has to participate in a program of chemical dependency, also counseling if needed, and he must maintain, our participants must maintain a program of employment, community service, or being in school. Gary's been with us since March of 2018, and has been doing well. We are asking that you judge his situation on its individual merits. I was heartened to hear earlier how this council would welcome, under the right circumstances, facilities which would help people who have addiction problems. We would ask you to use your powers and equity to grant the relief Gary's asking, and that I, I do- to help people like Gary in their recovery. They have a lot to deal with and so that they can recover and live successful, productive lives. And it's my understanding also that I'd like to yield the floor to Wayne Harper. He has indicated he has additional information that the council should hear with regard to this type of situation.
Mr. Harper.
Thank you, Commissioner, commissioners, or Chairman and commissioners, or whatever we go by here. When it's on the school board, we were never sure. So, everyone knows, I now represent Mike Townsend, who we addressed last weekend, or last week. I think it's important for this board to know that were they, and obviously you have to take this step by step and follow the rules. I don't know that you can grant relief on a one-time show-up basis, but you certainly could come up with a resolution to take care of people who want to pay their taxes before the second sale. It's allowed under Montana state laws. Eileen Joyce has informed you last week, and I'm sure she'd inform you again tonight. This is not, and I got to be honest, if there's someone who crosses Ts and dots Is better than Lori or is more sympathetic than Lori, I haven't met her. She was great in an issue I had with my business and Walter Hennessy, I'll say it on the record. But this has happened, to my understanding from the chief executive, four times, or three times, or four, in his entire four years on the council. This is something that you as a board should address on a case-by-case basis for two reasons. One, Butte Silver Bowl does not need any more property on its non-tax rolls. And two, why wouldn't you look at every case, case by case? And part of what you're going to see today, I'm sure you have it in your packets, is information you don't have at all. You never will. How did the notices go out? What taxes were due? How did it get applied? To vote without full knowledge is a reason you ought to address these people on a case-by-case basis. So, I realize there's not much you can do tonight on one issue unless you vote that way. I'll never hold that against someone. But as a commission, unfortunately, two weeks in a row, you've seen it. With the Dumis and these two, you've seen it three or four times in the last four years. This is something this commission could address to do the best thing for the people of Butte and for Silver Bowl, too, to not own these properties without getting taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Is there any questions from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I guess I just got a voice, you know, I think last week, we had a case that was a little different from the case tonight. And I do think that Mr. Harper has a valid point. I do think we should evaluate these on a case-by-case basis. And as you know, last week, we had some input from other parties involved. In this case here tonight, I don't recall getting any other input. And I don't recall the person last week having, somebody from drug court. And if you ever come to a budget finance meeting, you'll find that in drug court, when we do the drug court check run, you'll notice that we pay for a lot of things for adults and kids, you know, that are going through things, whether it be dance lessons or tennis shoes or martial arts and things like that. So, you know, the grant money that Judge Krueger gets for drug court, he's got control over and he spends it kind of wisely, but some of us don't feel it wisely sometimes and we question it all the time. So, I guess more or less what I'm saying is I do agree with what Mr. Harper's saying that I think this should be on a case-by-case basis. Earlier tonight, you know, we talked about sober houses and things like that. I think it took a lot for Mr. Rundle to get up here and say what he did. So, I would hope that we do what's recommended and kind of go on a case-by-case basis. Some issues, I feel, when you don't, you're a hypocrite. In this case, I feel just the opposite. So, thank you for my input.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan, counsel. So, if we, obviously, case-by-case scenario, definitely a true, I totally agree with that. But this is the same exact situation we dealt with last week. I mean, there's no, I mean, no disrespect to the situation, but just because he does have his lawyer here, doesn't make it any more different than last week. So, we can't let, I mean, both people spoke, they both have kids, it's the same situation, guys. We don't, I mean, I don't want to cloud this or, so my question on a question, we already voted the other one, how we voted, right? We're done. Let's kick the can down the road. So, can we re-vote that or are we done? Can we redo what we did last week? And is that a thing or, I mean, I mean, because honestly, this is the same situation. Let's be honest with ourselves, this exact same deal.
County Attorney Joyce.
Commissioner Morgan, are you asking me to answer his question?
I am.
Commissioner Morgan, are you asking me to answer his question?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Neil, what happened last week could be reconsidered under your rules. Somebody that voted on the prevailing side of the question, meaning the people that voted not to allow, it really wasn't not to allow Mr. Townsend to redeem his property. The motion was to go through the statutory process, which requires that you would pass a resolution and you'd have to have a public hearing before you pass that resolution where the council really would have to decide that this is the policy that we're going to develop on how we're going to sell properties in between a first and second tax sale. So, even though Commissioner Fisher and yourself are saying a case-by-case basis, it's really not the way the law's written. The law used to say, between the first and second tax sale, that you could negotiate a price with somebody that came in and wanted to buy it. But it changed in 2017 and now requires that in between the first and second tax sale, what the council can do is pass a resolution that really lays out how you're going to deal with these kind of requests. And so, it applies the same way to everybody. And I kind of went through this last week, but one of the last provisions is, you know, that you can put in your resolution that certain provisions that you think are in the best interest of the public and the overall welfare. And so, the process would have to be that you, if you wanted to consider Mr. Rundle's communication, I think you would have to at least probably make a motion to take it off the tax sale for the next, because the tax sale's in two weeks from tonight. And you would have to then decide that you want a resolution to be introduced, which you'd have to have a public hearing on. And then, after you went through those steps and passed the resolution, then you could go back and revisit Mr. Rundle's communication and decide to grant his request. But in terms of what you did last week with Mr. Townsend, somebody that voted to say, no, let's just let him, I think Commissioner Shaw's motion was to deny his request and to allow him to go back to the second tax sale. So, somebody that voted on that side could make a motion to reconsider that vote. And that would have to be at your next meeting next week. So, somebody would have to put in a communication by Friday to reconsider that action. And then, on, the full council would have to vote on that motion to reconsider. And you'd have to get enough people to say you want to reconsider it. And then, you could take a different action that you are, than the one you already took on last week's agenda, if all of that is clear as mud.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. And thank you for that. I remembered everything you said, so we're good. With that being said, the only way we can take it off, we can stop it from going on the tax sale is we'd have to have a resolution. Is that correct? We'd have to, or we can't, we couldn't vote tonight to stop it from the sale without doing a resolution. Am I correct?
County Attorney Joyce.
Chairman Morgan, Commissioner O'Neil, well, I think if you were going to take action to want to prepare this type of resolution for this body to come up with a way that they're going to deal with all properties between a first and second tax sale and Mr. Rundle's property was going to be one that would be eventually dealt with under that new resolution, you would at least have to probably decide to take it off the tax sale for February 4th, 5th? Because if you left it, it's going to take a while to do this process because in order for me to draft a resolution of intent and schedule a public hearing, you know, you have to publish twice for a public hearing and you wouldn't have this resolution passed for several weeks. And it's going to be past the date of the February 5th tax sale. So, you couldn't leave it on the tax sale because if you did, somebody, including Mr. Rundle, could go in and through the tax sale and buy it back on that date. You know, and then obviously, other people could come to that auction and bid on it also. But you're going to have to take it off the tax sale and kind of make a motion that was similar to the one that Mr. Anderson made last week. But my recommendation would be that if you did decide to do something like that, that you would want to maybe reconsider what you did with Mr. Townsend because I do believe you should treat everybody the same.
County Attorney Joyce, just one question on that. If a resolution is sought after, is that a separate communication that would have to be added to next week's agenda? Probably would, right? From a commissioner, from Ms. Baker, how would that go?
Mr. Chairman, I guess the only way that, you know, yeah, if there was some kind of a motion tonight to prepare a resolution based on Mr. Rundle's communication, that this is one of the properties that you would, you know, based on these circumstances, where basically, his request is to do, do something to allow him to purchase this property between the first and second sale? And what I'm saying is, you can't just authorize that. You can't just say, yes, we are going to make a motion to approve his request because the law only requires you to follow this process where you pass a more broader-based policy on how you will do it. So, I think if, I don't know, if somebody made a motion that that resolution was going to be prepared through this communication, then I could submit the resolution. But otherwise, I, somebody also could do a separate motion to do a resolution in the, to apply in the future for all of these kind of situations.
Or just, I'm looking through the procedure here, we could hold this communication in abey and see if this body felt that was the appropriate way to do it. A second communication could be drafted by next week, asking you to prepare a resolution. And somebody could do a motion to reconsider on the communication that we met on last week. Is that, that's probably a cleaner way of doing it rather than just using this communication as the, as the catch-all, if this, if that's what this body wants.
Commissioner Morgan, yes, except that I think there's the caveat that you would have to take both of those properties off the tax sale.
And we could segregate that out of the committee, the whole meeting report next week and pull them out. This one, we could.
Yeah. And the other one, it's done.
We have to do a motion to reconsider next week. Okay. Commissioner Sorch, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess there's more comment and a question for, going to be for the county attorney. I, in all the years, I, this seems, I don't remember this happening in all the years. It's, it doesn't happen all the time, you know, so I'm kind of unclear. But I do want to make a disclosure that Mr. Rundle is married to my wife's first cousin. So, I don't know if that, if there would be any kind of conflicts there. And so, that'd be my question to the county attorney.
County Attorney Joyce.
To recuse myself.
You expect me to have these nepotism laws memorized? What degree of consonquinity is that? You can't vote if you're in the, within the fourth degree of affinity or, I think it's in the, I think it's the second, anyway, I think it's the fourth degree of consonquinity. And I don't know, so it's your wife, so that means that it's by marriage. And it's a first cousin, did you say?
Yes.
And it's not him, but it's his wife? Your wife's related to his wife, is basically what you're saying?
That is correct.
I'll have to look at our nepotism statute real quickly, but.
I, we'll continue on while you're doing that. On the question, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. There is a little bit of a difference between this, and that is because Mr. Rundle was on contract for deed with Summit Valley Title Company. So, in some way or some form, some legal way, Summit Valley Title Company was actually the owner of the home. If he was on contract for deed, you know, and he wasn't paying, I mean, wouldn't you think that somehow that they should be notified also that the taxes were in arrears?
Mr. Connors, I don't know if you have an answer to that.
Yes, the actual contract for deed is with a different gentleman that escrow was run through the title company. That's instead of them holding ownership of the property under the contract for deed.
So, was the original owner notified as well? I mean, why didn't they act on it and work with Mr. Rundle later?
My understanding is the owner of the contract for deed never gave Mr. Rundle any type of notice of default. My, through the grapevine, I've not spoken to the gentleman. I think he's trying to claim that he didn't receive notice and that he changed addresses. I don't know if the title company was supposed to send him notice of this occurring or not. But I, I think that from talking to people in the county attorney's office, that's my understanding, he's claiming he didn't get notice.
Ms. Baker-Patrick, or Patrick Baker? Can you, I'll get it right one of these times. I keep trying. Did you have any?
Yes, in your packet, one of the notices that a tax deed may be issued that we sent certified, you'll have the graph down on the bottom with the taxes that are due. And it's for, on the right-hand side, it has the B&amp;B Investments, that that would have been their notice. On the third page, there was a certified letter sent that we received back for inadequate address.
And that was, that one was signed for? Okay. So, B&amp;B Investments is the original owner's company or LLC? Okay. Anything else on the question? Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a matter of procedure, if any communication is submitted next week, wouldn't the tax sale on the 5th happen before the, before we even acted on it? On the two weeks, on the Wednesday? I mean, I think if we do anything tonight, it's, the tax sale is already going to happen during the day and we won't even get it to vote on until that evening.
Commissioner McDonough, just, so if a communication was submitted on Friday, we have a regular meeting on the 22nd of January, so we could take action on any item at that point? So, we could, we could withdraw these two properties from the tax sale next week if, if that's what this body decides to do. Commissioner Shea, did you have any questions?
I, I think I do have something to say. Thank you, Chairman. First of all, Lori Bakerpatrick, I think you do a wonderful job as our treasurer. I think your, your work is, is organized, it's neat, it's accurate, it's very detailed, and I appreciate that. I want to acknowledge Mr. Rundle for his efforts and congratulate him on his sobriety. I had no idea and I'm really, really proud of you right now. Good job on that. I, I've not changed my position from last week that I don't think anybody within our government enjoys having to seize a property from an individual. And if we can find a tool in between tax sales that allows folks to, to redeem their properties, I, I think that's in everybody's best interest. It certainly might make life easier at the treasurer's office to not have to take someone's home away or through the processes. So I just wanted to go on record with that. I would be in favor, I'm not sure how the motion would be made, but of, of treating both individuals equally and everybody equally going forward with removing the two from the tax rolls. And I guess we can figure out what that motion needs to look like.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Commissioners, any, any other questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I think at this time, I would like to make a motion that we concur with Mr. Rundle's request and allow him to redeem his property because he has a letter from the bank that says they're going to pay. He has his drug court lawyer here. I mean, these are two different situations totally. There's a lot of difference between the property down on Bank Street and property over here on the, near the Butte High School. So I would make a motion that we concur with communication 19578 and place on file. Thank you.
On the question, before that motion dies of lack of second, County Attorney Joyce, it's my understanding that we can't just simply make that motion to concur and place this communication on file. It would have to be held in abeyance. We'd have to do a resol, resolution to amend our current rules and so it's going to have to go through a process. So we'd have to hold this communication and move forward in a separate entity with this resolution. County Attorney Joyce, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, motion dies, lack of second, lack of legality. Commissioner Fisher on the question?
Yeah, I guess my question is, is we had the same thing last week and we concur and fought, we denied and it was, went through. So, I mean, if it's on the agenda, how come you can deny it but you can't approve it? I mean, that's the question I got. How come you can deny the same communication but you can't approve it? What's the sense of having it on here? I mean, that though.
County Attorney Joyce.
Commissioner Fisher? Okay, so I thought that I answered this question in response to Commissioner O'Neal's question, but the, the motion that was made last week was basically a subs, I don't remember. When Commissioner Anderson made a motion to follow the process that's in the law, you know, it failed. And so Commissioner Shaw's motion was just to deny, go, to deny the request, but it was basically, in effect, denying going through with passing a resolution. And that's what the body decided to do. The reason that you can't approve it is because there are specific provisions in the law that state what you can do between a first and second tax sale. And that's the process that I already outlined. You can't just allow somebody to come in and make a request to redeem their property now past the period of redemption and after the first tax sale already happened. You have to follow the process that's outlined in the state law that, again, requires this body to come up with a policy, so to speak, through a resolution on how you're going to deal with properties in between a first and second tax sale. And last week, I read the statute and there's a whole bunch of specific provisions that have to be in the resolution, but again, there is that one catch-all provision that talks about, you know, you can put things in the resolution that you think are in the best interest of the overall public benefit and welfare. So that's why you can't just do that because the law doesn't allow you to.
No. Ms. Lori Bakerpatrick, one question that I have is if it goes to second tax sale and the individual or whoever bids on that, do they have to have cash or how does, what kind of monetary requirement do they have before they can bid on the, on the property?
Yes, Chairman Morgan. They can bring cash, check, money order, or credit card. They'd have to wait till after the sale so we can process their credit card at that time.
So in this instance, a letter from a bank guaranteeing a certain amount of funds, would that warrant an actual bid on a property?
I don't know about warranting a bid on a property. I would, I would believe that the bank would want to issue the amount due for the sale to Butte Silver Bow with a check.
And they'd have up to a certain amount to bid on the property?
Right.
And have a check within that scope. Makes sense. Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you once again, Chairman Morgan. This is, this property's never been offered a tax sale before, has it?
Yes, it was offered in October.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Rundle, for coming up and speaking. I mean, it takes a lot of chutzpah to do that and we really appreciate that. And also your county, your attorney representing you. So if we hold this in abeyance, this is my understanding, that next week at a regular meeting, somebody on the prevailing side, that's any of the eight people that voted, is that correct? On the prevailing side can ask for a reconsideration next week. And if that's the case, I would hold this in abeyance until that time. And if anybody on the prevailing side would like to do that, that's the first step, if I, my understanding is to get this into another position where you can do the resolution.
County Attorney Joyce?
Correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Shaw, I believe that somebody would probably, it wouldn't be on the, the one that you're trying to reconsider is already off of the agenda now that you've already voted and placed it on file, which is Mr. Townsend's communication. So I think that somebody would have to put in a communication by Friday of this week asking that Mr. Townsend's communication be reconsidered under your rules. And so when that communication is on next week's agenda, the council would first have to vote. I think, I have to look at your rules. It might require a super majority to re, it might require eight people, but you have to.
It is a super.
I think it is a super majority. So you'd have to get, if there were all 12 of you here, you have to get eight people to vote to reconsider it. And if that motion didn't have enough votes, then you're not going to reconsider his and the original action would stand. But if you then did a motion to reconsider, then his communication would come back into play and you could then decide to take a different action on his communication. But again, I think that it's pretty paramount that both of these properties would have to be taken off the tax sale if you, as the, a council, you know, is going to decide to follow a different process or establish this process between a first and second tax sale.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Could I call on Mr. Harper to speak for a minute?
Mr. Harper. I guess if it's okay with Mr. Connors, I don't, for legal representation?
I think what I've heard a couple of times, and I want to be clear to the commissioners, I, I think County Attorney Joyce is saying tonight to assure this board that in abeyance or with whatever you do in the next couple of weeks, to assure that everyone is treated the same and get and take care of. Got and take care of, get, I don't think get is the word, but just taken care of. I, am I correct? They could make a motion to take both these properties off the tax roll, the tax sale, tonight and deal with that right now without going into the resolution.
County Attorney Joyce?
Mr. Chairman, well, they couldn't really take action on taking Mr. Townsend's off the tax rolls because that's not on the agenda tonight. And they already acted on his communication and placed it on file. So I think that process would have to happen if somebody did a motion to reconsider, yeah.
But, but you could do it as to tonight's agenda.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think essentially what the chairman said earlier, if, if the action was just to hold it tonight, then next week, when there's a regular meeting, they could pull it out of the committee of the whole and make that motion then to take it off the tax sale and ask for the resolution to be drafted.
Short of the resolution, they could tonight say it's for him. It's not going to happen February 5th.
County Attorney Joyce? Tonight, we would just hold it in abeyance. We wouldn't strike it from the agenda because if we do that, we can't talk about it again.
Could you, I don't know if I understood your second question, but.
Tonight, couldn't they make a motion, abeyance or hold it in whatever? They could certainly say it will, his property will not be on the tax sale for February 5th irrespective of the resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Put you on the spot.
They could, but I think that's probably a dangerous action to take because if a resolution isn't then done, you know, I don't know, but then we're going to be in the position of evicting Mr. Rundle from his property because it's already in Butte Silver Bow's name.
So, so thinking of all of this, I mean, there's, here's, here's what I think our options are. I know County Attorney Joyce can, will correct me if I'm wrong. We have the option to deny this communication and place it on file like we did to the one last year. The other option that we had, or last week, seems like last year, last week, we have the option of holding this one in abeyance and, and ask a commissioner that's going to submit a communication this Friday to ask the county attorney to draft a resolution as she has stated before. And as well, have a coun, or commissioner tonight say that they'll do a motion to reconsider another letter on Friday from Mr. Townsend. That's where, where we're at with it. So if I'm incorrect, County Attorney Joyce, you can, you can tell me, but I mean, that's pretty much our options here.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I think that your options are, again, to do what you did last week and to deny the request and just, then if that did happen, this property would remain on the sale for February 5th and Mr. Rundle, along with whatever other person that wanted to attend that auction, could come in and bid on the property. And yes, you could just simply hold it in abeyance and decide next week to segregate it out and make further action on it. Or third, I guess you could make a motion to, you know, start the process to prepare a resolution if you wanted to do that and schedule the public hearing. I think those are your three options. I would caution you, if you pick the third one, that somebody should be reconsidering the action that you took last week.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. That's where I want to get to on this is I, and again, I'm, is not one to take anybody's property or by no means, but we also have to do what is right per the law and per whatever. I mean, there's no question, if we are going to reconsider anything to do on Mr. Rundle's, we have to reconsider the other one. Here's why. It's the same exact thing. Even Mr. Rundle's, I'm not being critical of your letter, it said, it doesn't guarantee funds. I mean, it says not, on there, it says it's not even guaranteed. So, I mean, the, 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 the letter, the, the other people last week had funds too. They said they could pay for it from their bank. Did they have a letter? No, but in my opinion, they're, them saying it versus that letter is just as credible. So make sure we're, we have, if we're going to do this for Mr. Rundle, we have to do that on the other one or we just turn it down, period. That's just, I had to get that off my chest, so thank you.
Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we hold communication number 19-578 in abeyance.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Anything on the question? Commissioner Shaw? Commissioner Sorech?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Attorney Joyce?
You are not related closely enough.
Anything else on the question on the motion? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I get to be the bad, the bad girl again, but I agree completely with Commissioner O'Neal's said and it was spot on. We have to be really careful about what we're doing here. We're creating a hornet's nest. And, you know, I, we can thank the state for dropping it in our lap. I'm just going to say it, you know, giving us the authority to have discretionary authority, but the fact is, you know, it's, what's good for, the goose is good for the gander. We have to be careful about that. And so at this time, I will make a substitute motion to deny Mr. Rundle's request and place this on file.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded to deny this communication and place it on file. Is there anything on that question? Okay. At this time, I would ask that you, you vote on the substitute motion, which is again, to deny this communication and, and place it on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Okay, we have five, five yea and five nay.
Okay, so the motion fails. So we'll go to the substitute motion to, or, excuse me, to the first motion, which was to, Commissioner Shea, would you? To hold it in abeyance. Okay. So this is the first motion, hold in abeyance, communication 19-578. Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Okay, we have six yea and four nay.
So motion passes. Okay, so we'll continue to hold that one in abeyance. Moving on to the next communication, communication 19-581. Patsy Coats, property specialist, requesting councilor commissioner's approval of the tax deed public auction to be held on February 5th, 2020, and to request the county attorney's office to prepare a resolution to be read and acted upon the same night as the tax deed public auction. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance pending the, the February 5th date. Number seven, communication, commissioners, I would just ask, keep it down. Number seven, communication 19582. Ed Bandaroff, Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, questioning councilor commissioners to invite a Montana DPHHS toxicologist to give a presentation relative to the hazards risk to human health and heavy metals contaminants present in the Butte Silver Bow community. I did talk to Ms. Sullivan at the Health Department and she is scheduled, or she is working on scheduling this presentation with the state and she was going to let me know as soon as the state will be here. They have agreed to come here and talk to us. It's just figuring out a date that they will be here. Number eight, communication 2020-15. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, Council of Commissioners, to authorize a bid opening on January 22nd, 2020 for a 12-yard dump truck, plow truck, and sand. and sander for the tiffet. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance pending the January 22nd date. Communication 192020-18, Michael Stickney, 1136 West Broadway, informing council of commissioners of an incident that occurred because of an unmaintained sidewalk located at 1142 West Broadway and is asking that the county address this problem as it seems to be the property owned by Butte Silver Bow. As you guys will recall, Commissioner Fisher, you segregated this, made the same motion that was on the recommendation to refer it to the chief executive's office, but we failed to put in place on file. I don't believe there was any other action that this individual was looking for, so that's why it's on the agenda. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I move to place Communication 2020-18 on file.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Mr. Neary and Mr. Palmer, please take note of this communication once again. Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea and zero nay.
Okay, motion passes. This time, I would look for any public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Bandaroff, please state your name.
All right, Bandaroff, 2601 Grand Avenue, you won't recognize me from point of origin, I'll come anyhow. On Communication 202004, which is no longer on the agenda, that was the motion last week. As I remember it, the motion was made on the procedure. And that was the motion that you denied last week. I don't remember the motion to deny the request. But from the letter in the standard today, you did it right on that one. It was a drug house. I don't agree with Mr. O'Neil over there that everyone has to be done the same. And I commend you on working through it this evening and coming up with the proper procedure. But as a matter of human decency, in a community with a higher than average percentage of residents living below the poverty line, the motion before you was to reestablish the procedure that was taken away by the state in 2017. And that's what you're in the process of doing, so I commend you on that. This council was asked to reestablish in a little different form, a matter permitted by state law, a procedure that existed prior to the change. You denied that procedure last week. I do hope, for the greater good of the greater community, that you will reestablish a procedure whereby a property owner can come before this council on a case-by-case basis and reclaim his property between the two sales. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bandaroff. I know we can't have discussion, I'm just going to say a comment. Your, your idea of the motion is incorrect, I respectfully say that. That is not what the motion that we voted on was about, so. At this time, I would make, or I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, oh, motion passes, thank you.